All right, I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education meeting to order for Monday, December 10th. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Kelly.
Ms. Betterbud? Here. Mr. Caseleyle?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Rakowski?
Excuse.
Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Sewer?
Excuse.
Mr. White?
Here.
exits are in the back of the LGI.
All right, I'd like to rise for a moment of silence for Mrs. Linda Rodriguez, a retired teaching assistant and former president of the Beacon Fair Professional Association. Tonight, we have two workshops. The first workshop is going to be the Beacon High School, BHS, and we have Ms. Soto presenting.
So, good evening. Thank you, our members of the Board of Education, our superintendent of schools, Dr. Landau, and his executive team, for the opportunity to speak tonight and share our leadership goals and to highlight some of the ones that are happening in the high school. So, when I was first hired as principal, I was given very good advice. I was told to listen, learn, learn the Beacon way, and be when appropriate. That along with our superintendent's vision and mission, we were able to come up with these three goals: communication, equity, and excellence. So, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our commitment to communication. What we're doing this year that's a little different than past years is we're having flipped faculty meetings. We provide videos and PowerPoints to our faculty members about housekeeping, the issues that we have in the building, so that when we do meet, we can really focus on good teaching practice. We also provide information for them so they can prepare for these meetings, an inspirational video, a quote, and some reading material. We meet with our department coordinators and teachers to discuss educational goals. We all have an open door policy. Teachers are starting to get used to us, they're coming in more and just talking about some of their wishes and goals in the building. We, just slowing down, we have more global calls going out, text messages, emails, and we also have Twitter, so please, sign on, we need some more followers in the high school. Okay? We also have our weekly and monthly newsletters. So, our weekly newsletter is the built-in, it's just to remind parents of some things that are going to be happening in the high school. And our newsletter is to recap some of the things that are happening in the high school. We also, something new that our guidance department is doing, is providing our community with a guidance newsletter focused on college and career planning. One thing I want to mention is our monthly newsletter, we feature students every month, and we also feature a teacher, an educator of the month. And it just, we want to feature kindness, grade point average, community service, those are the kind of things that we like to feature on our monthly newsletters. We also have monthly meetings, so we meet with our Board of Education student members and our student representatives. And all of these conversations are had over milk and cookies, right? But we're starting to have more of these meetings, it's more than monthly meetings, I find that we're meeting on a weekly basis now, which is interesting. But we have great conversations, and out of these conversations, we're finding that we're implementing or enhancing some of our programs in the high school. Which leads to our second goal, and that is equity. So, in essence, equity is create equal access for our students and their educational pathways. In essence, we're trying to create a level playing field for our students. And we're doing that, we're doing just one example, three weeks ago, we had an ENL open house. We had our ENL teachers come in and present to our students and their parents about the ENL project and their goals and their dreams for the program. We also inform them of many of the services that our students have access to. What was so wonderful about this evening is that our parents and our students and our teachers all dressed up in their native clothing and presented foods from their country. So, it gave them the opportunity to share their uniqueness. It was actually a wonderful, magical evening. We are also meeting with our PTSO. They provide us with information what our community needs. We're having more meetings with our support staff, our school counselors, our social worker, and our school psychologist, who really know our students, they're case managers, and can provide us with information on how to better service our students. So, through all of these conversations, as I said, we can enhance and improve many of our programs here at BHS. One example is that we were able to include three new clubs to our building. We have our multicultural club, our WOW Club, and our Girls Who Code Club. We also are doing something a little different, introducing the seal of bilinguality here in the high school. I'll just tell you very quickly what that's about. So, our students who earn eighty percent or better in their ENL agents class, who take our DCC Spanish IV class, and if they earn an eighty-five percent or better on their exam, our checkpoint C language exam in our course, they can now present a project to a committee. And if they're successful in meeting those requirements, they can earn an extra seal on their diploma. So, there are different designations to our diplomas, so this is just a nice little seal, which they can showcase on their college applications, giving them more opportunities. I'd also like to share with you that we also have an after-school program, and you know, they're going to talk a little bit about that a little later on, but this program meets 2:15 to 5:00. We provide snacks for our students, and I have to thank Ms. Bogato, who's in charge of our food services, who opened up the kitchen for our students so they can get a snack, and they can meet with their teachers or an NHS tutor. And they'll, they have some data on that as well. But what's nice is that our kids can sit down, relax, have a meal, study, and then our student athletes can go on to their after-school programs. So, they've been nourished, have some increased energy for their workout. We've also provided some presentations for our students, oops, sorry about that. We'll talk about that a little bit later. We've had some guest speakers who have come to our building and have spoken to our young men and our women, and our young women, to help them prepare for the world outside of the high school. Something else that we've done this year is that we had, we were invited to Marist College and Dutchess Community College. Our ninth grade students had the opportunity to experience what college life was all about. And the reason we did this is because we want our ninth graders to understand that whatever they do, in the moment that they set foot in the high school, it really counts. So, the opportunity to visit lecture halls, walk the campus, visit schools, go into dorm rooms, which is really exciting for them, cafeteria. However, the best experience for these students was when they met a football player at Marist College. And he was, he was very sweet and kind to our students, and he shared with them how fortunate our students are because they were taken to these colleges, which showed them that we really cared for their future. He shared a very sad story where he felt he did not have that experience in his high school. And that was, that was very nice for our students to hear. Which brings me to Navions. So, we have a college tool here called Navions. Our students were introduced to this program some time ago, but this year is when we really implemented the program. Our school counselors met with all of our senior classes, and then they would call down one at a time to me with their school counselors to create portfolios for themselves. So, I'm very happy to report, or actually very excited to report, that we have seven-hundred-and-ninety-two active applications here in the high school. According to our school counselors, that is the largest number of applications they have filed. I don't have data on that, I can only be got it by what they say, but we're really excited about that number. So, I'm going to call Ms. Sims up in just a second. Our three goals, we hope, all focused to having our students feel connected to our buildings and our adults to our buildings. So, one of the things we're working on is restorative practices, so I have Ms. Sims, who will come up and speak to you about that.
Okay, so, we've been working with Dutchess Mediation Center, with Ms. Claudia Abbott Barish, and she's been coming in to give training to not only staff, but also to students. So, during the past Superintendent Conference Day, she came in and she trained, I would say, probably more than seventy percent of our staff in restorative justice circles. And basically, restorative justice training is teaching teachers and staff to look at discipline with a new lens, right? So, instead of it always being punitive suspensions and students not really having an opportunity to learn from what has happened, we are trying to shift that lens so that teachers, parents, staff can have those conversations alongside students to not only understand what wrong was done, but how can you repair the harm? So, that's the premise of the program. And we have been using circle activities with one of our STEM classes, pretty much once a week, going in and having those circles. In addition to that, we are, we have a couple of our students here who have been trained in circle activities. So, the move that we'd like to have in the next couple of weeks to months is to invite more kids into the circle. So, for example, we had a couple of students that we met with today, and we're giving them the opportunity to take part in a whole circle, where they can have a conversation about something that has happened, and they can see, you know, the different perspectives of each individual student in the circle to see how we can come to a resolution. So, we really want to enable our students to be not only proactive, but to have the tools necessary to have those conversations, so that it's not always just a suspension, but it's learning how to be a citizen. And that's what our goal is in terms of college and career readiness.
Nice to be here with you again. As we said here early, this has been a busy school year to start, but we've been, you know, Lisa's brought so many different positive parts to the school. As we mentioned, just trying to be child-centered, really in a lot of different ways. We've brought so many people to this building with, I haven't ever seen so many of assemblies, just trying to get kids involved in different ways. Community partnerships, you know, we still do have a great relationship with Dia. Dia comes, there are people from Dia come in and work with our art folks, and we have such that ability, more than any other school in this county, we can really get that connection. So, we're very blessed to have that. CAPE continues to work with us. CAPE is the Council on Addiction Prevention Education. Right now, we are one of many schools in this county that have, that have, you know, the issue that, the new issue, there's always some new issue. The newest issue is vaping in schools, you know, smoking. Before, it'd be so easy to figure out what's going on, how to prevent smoking, because of all the, you know, the scent and we have alarms that can go off about smoke. Now, it's just, it's very difficult now with the vaping. So, we had them come in, CAPE came and gave a good presentation to tell the kids the risk of not only, you know, the ramifications of what really is going on. It might seem easy because you're getting away with something, but the bottom line is, it is, the dangers associated with it. So, the Council of Addiction Prevention is also just so important to us. They also do our, as you know, they continue to work with us in the rest of the county's schools on the driving program, so that students, we work in connection with our kids who come here, they can't just park, it's a privilege to park, but they have to go through the train, and CAPE does that as well. When they come here, and we go to different schools around the county. Number of programs, STEM programs, we're working with another school coming in, we're trying to get groups from both the middle schools involved, as well as the high school and most stuff, you're going to touch on that, but we do have three different groups from our high school. We have two sciences, two math, and two techs, and we're working, it's all in the infant stages here, so, you know, we'd tell you that we're bringing this in, this grant that was given, and we are seeing how we're going to move forward, how we can put it into the curriculum. But that's something in the infant stages here that we have a lot of interest in. Field trips, again, we're getting, we're child-centered, trying to get as many field trips out as we can, so the kids can learn not only what's happening in class, but then take that out and into the real world and apply some of those skills that they're seeing. We've had so many opportunities for the freshmen, we already had, the freshmen are getting so many opportunities to see, you know, to come back in, how many times, how hard it is, remember coming to middle school to the high school, it seems always that transition time is tough. So, Ms. Soto brought into this ability to be, to get them involved, maybe so we can get them quicker, so that they can realize, you know, how important it is to work on the academics, so that by the time their sophomore year, that they're moving with their credits and they're not repeating. But, so, we're trying a lot of different things in that way, and we're certainly, you know, putting our efforts in there. But a couple of other things, the annual trips and Navions, we spoke of computer science and arts.
So, we hope that with our three goals, that we have more of our students, our students feel connected to our building. There are two teachers in particular that I walked into their classroom the other day, and they had this beautiful note on their door. The students truly feel that they are welcomed and they are cared for, and she said, you know, "We believe in you, we trust in you, you're listened to, you are cared for, you are important, we will succeed." And so, these are the things that we want our students to feel when they walk into our building. We are also, the administration team, and we created a Sunshine Committee, are focused on, our teachers and our faculty and our staff also really connected when they walk into the building. So, here we have a picture of them, they have a motion, No Shade November Month. We had our teachers have lunch together one day, everybody brought in a crock pot, their favorite meal, and they had the opportunity to sit down and have lunch together, which often they don't get a chance to do, because there were often their little pods in the building, so it was just a nice way for them to connect. We're also having Spirit Week next week. It's one of the things I came from our conversations with our students, is that we shouldn't just have Spirit Week one week for the year. We should really show our school pride throughout the school year. So, what we're doing next year is we're having a holiday pajama party. They didn't have it during the next three weeks, so they wanted to have it next week, so I granted them that. We have a holiday character day, where the children can dress up as their favorite bedtime character, storybook character, rather. And we're having an ugly sweater day. Students will wear the ugly sweaters, teachers will wear all the ugly sweaters, and they're all going to vote, and there's going to be some fun prizes going around in the building. Our teachers are decorating their doors, and the kids are really excited about that. And they're stirring up a lot of, I call it a lot of smack talk between the teachers, they'll say, "Oh, so-and-so has invented a door than your door," so they're really amping things up, which is just a nice feeling in our boroughs right now. So, this ends our PowerPoint, but I leave you with this one thought that we share in our buildings, that every child has one shot at an excellent education. It is up to us to make sure that they get it. Let's transform our dreamers to tumors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Any questions?
During one of our recent discussions, on an unrelated matter, it developed the information that sometimes clubs are closed because they're filled. I'm surprised at that. I'm curious as to how that happens, and if there are any remedy for that, if there are students that want to participate, do we have ways of expanding the envelope?
So, Mr. Wolf, that's the first I've heard of that. I know that all of our students are welcomed in our clubs. I have not heard of that in the high school. We welcome all of our students, we encourage that they participate and connect in some way in our building. The bigger the better. But I'll look into that. Thank you for bringing that.
Well, just to jump in, the information I shared with the board was that Roundabout has, I think, two or three clubs that close out, the elementary school has a few clubs that close out, I did not, I did not say the high school has clubs that close out.
Wrong principle, then.
That's okay.
I have a general question. I think we're all very excited about the shift in restorative justice, introducing restorative practices for disciplinary, but we're also very curious about how that's going, both on the transition side with teachers and staff being able to implement it, it's probably a pretty big shift, but also what we're hearing from students, is that on the ground yet?
So, we provided training at our last Superintendent Conference Day, and that, there was a lot of discussion around it, like teachers wanted to know, "How can I implement this in my class? Because I have a curriculum from A to Z that I need to complete throughout the school year, and I know time because of assets." But sometimes it's just picking and choosing things that work for you, so it could, just a matter of, if you see an issue going on between two students, reach out to support staff or administration, and maybe come down during one of your prep periods or lunch period, we can all sit down, have lunch, and have conversations on how to air out our differences or concerns. Because in the past, from what I've learned, some teachers would see an issue go on in their class and then refer the students out to administration. And that's not always a good thing, because they're in your class. So, students need to understand and know, you know, my teacher really cares, they're invested in just in how I'm learning in my class, so we're now pulling teachers into those conversations. So, we're modifying what you're thinking about.
Is it happening?
But it's, it is happening. We started today, and we are meeting with, this week, we have someone coming in. So, we had some situations going on in the high school, so we thought it would be best to have this woman come in and start meeting with our team. So, we met our students today, along with some people from our faculty, who say, "This is happening tomorrow, we're going to start talking about some of these are happening." Because we wanted to give them the opportunity to process what's happening, and also inform their parents that this was coming down the pipe.
Excellent. I didn't know you started just today. That's fantastic.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
It's great to hear about child-centered URS.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Roundabout, Mr. Saltish.
First of all, thank you for allowing me here this evening. Mike, you can tell you, he's basically my assistant on a daily basis, as I call him many times, to assist me with computer technology, and I often record what's happening with my computer so that he doesn't pick up crazy. So, we have some nice videos. I'm going to echo a lot of what you've heard from the other principals, in terms of the three goals that we've looked at this year, which are communication, excellence, and equity. I'd like to first thank my assistant principals, because a lot of the work that goes on is spearheaded by them. So, we will defer to them at certain points if you stump me with questions, or if I need a little support, but I'm going to have them stay there for right now, and we will reference them as needed. We wanted to start with this wonderful picture of Roundabout, because we had a morning this year where we had a rainbow over the building, and it was captured by one of our staff members, and it was just a really cool experience. So, it kind of was really neat to walk into and see all the kids outside trying to get pictures of it, and it was a really nice way to start the year off and the day off. That's right, I'm charged. Communication. We've had a lot of parent meetings this year on multiple levels. So, our eighth grade trip to DC, which I'll hit multiple times in this presentation, we have a parent meeting to really try to explain that trip, because that trip has a lot of questions that come with it, and a lot of information. It's a well-attended night, where I spent a long time going, and this year was a really good presentation, because I actually went to DC last year, so I could answer questions this year based on my experience, where last year, I was giving them information in hopes in moving forward. But that meeting, interacting with the parents, the parents that stay and ask questions all night long, we sat there, the presentation was about forty-five minutes to an hour, but there are people that will stay an extra thirty to forty minutes, just to come up and talk with you about what your expectations are on the trip and how it goes, you name it, there's questions about it. But that face-to-face meeting is really, really important for parents, especially when they're going to allow them to go out of state with you. You know, yes, they have electronic devices and phones, but at the end of the day, they're only in eighth grade, and that's a nerve-wracking experience for a lot of parents, allowing their child to go that far with, you know, some school personnel. Also, we did two one-to-one Chromebook meetings. During our open house, we had a Chromebook meeting for seventh grade parents that evening prior to open house starting, which was well-attended. And then again, we had one for sixth grade parents before we rolled now for the sixth grade parents. Both meetings, our tech director, Mike Keely, was able to run the majority of the meeting, you know, does an outstanding job. He has really made a huge difference in terms of explaining to parents and answering questions that put them at ease. I mean, you know, people want to know about the filters, and what can their kids get on at home, and what's going to happen if they break Chromebook and if it gets lost. And those meetings allowed us opportunities to meet with parents, again, face-to-face, where they could ask the questions, they could stick around if they're not comfortable asking in a big audience and talk to you, so that they're comfortable for their child shows up at home with an expensive device that's now in their hands with no knowledge about it. So, those were other great meetings. Pick-a-time, big thanks to Ms. Soto, because this is an initiative that she helped push this year. It was a new way for report card conferences, so the pick-a-time rolled it out. There were a few days where, and she may have had the same experience, I think I spent days on the phone with parents, just working through the glitches with them, and they were all, you know, they just wanted to get on and sign up, but literally making sure they had things typed in, credit. It was the first time we had ever done it, and it was the first time parents in our district were ever signing up like that. But it really allowed for parents to control the schedule, when they were coming into the school to see teachers, as opposed to getting on lines that are ten and twelve parents deep, you know, they take off of work, they show up at the school, and they wait outside somebody's door for forty minutes, trying to get in to see them. We didn't have that issue this year with that tool, and I thank the district immensely and the high school for helping push that tool for us to be able to use. Another thing that we have this year that's new is our PPISS Committee, which is spearheaded by Mrs. Edelman. They're doing a monthly newsletter that they're pushing out to help inform students and family of upcoming activities, events that are going on inside the school. Excellence. My APs could get up here and talk as much as I could. We have seen many amazing lessons this year. I tweeted a math lesson that I sat in, and being a math teacher, I found it to be amazing. I had Mrs. Paredes and Mrs. Winter were doing an ICT classroom. They took parallel lines cut by a transversal, which if you talk to anybody in math, isn't exactly the most exciting topic in the world, it's pretty boring. They created something where they pulled the students' cultures, backgrounds, experiences all into the lesson, and students were able to create their own little city, where they had to locate each business or thing that they were drawing, based on the rules and the expectations of the mathematical properties that were in play. And listening to the conversations that students had in that classroom, where they're telling the teachers about their grandparents and where they're from, and why they named a certain building a certain way, "Well, my family always had an Italian restaurant for years, and that's why I wanted..." The teachers found out more information in that forty-five-minute class about those students than you could have in a math, in math class all year long without that type of activity. We have seen them creating cells out of Jell-O and candy, like you see up there. Mrs. Stora was doing the QR scanners with the codes and scavenger hunt. We had Mr. Castaldi doing multiple activities. I actually got to witness his mock trial for Christopher Columbus that he did with every one of his classes in our library, where every student had a role. one of his classes in our library, where every student had a role in some way, shape, or form. And that activity didn't involve the Chromebooks at all. There were no Chromebooks in that activity. It was just hands-on. We had students on the jury, prosecution, defense, Christopher Columbus. It was really, really neat to watch the students interact in that way and the experiences they got out of that. In terms of excellence, we're lucky. Roundabout got to be the school that got to go one-to-one. It was nerve-wracking, because there's a lot of new things that now arise that weren't there before. But, I mean, it has been such a smooth transition from having students now with devices, having every teacher having a smart panel in their classroom that they can use, with the district providing training, not only on how to use the panels, but at our last conference day, they provided training to the teachers that showed them how to control the Chromebooks. I mean, they can control what sites the kids are on, monitor where they're... I mean, I sat at the training for an hour, and I was amazed by how much they can use those Chromebooks and just how much they can control where the students are at to help them. Because obviously, when you introduce something new like this, you need to be able to control. We don't want 30 different people on YouTube channels while they're teaching. So the information that was shared by our tech director was truly an asset for our teachers, and many of them have begun using that. When I talk about field trips, it's where I begin to talk about our equity goal. I believe, and you heard the high school talk about it, there was times where this district and this school in particular, we didn't do anything. There were no trips. You went to school every day, you went to class, and that was what you did. And when I think of equity at a level playing field, we have lots of families in this district that can do things for their kids, and take them on vacations, and take them to experiences. And we have lots of families that that's not practical for. And the more trips and events that we can take them and expose them to, the more I feel like we're leveling the playing field for the students who don't get to experience those opportunities. We take our eighth graders to Black Violin. If you have not seen Black Violin, it is probably the best thing we'll take them to all year. It is an outstanding musical performance. They come to SUNY Purchase every year. They do a student show. SUNY Purchase gives us tickets every year. We do not, we charge students for that event, but we do not stop any student from going. So we make sure our teachers are aware that if money is the issue, it's not the issue. And our PTO and our district support us in making sure that the funds are there so that every kid who's supposed to go to that event goes. We did Sugar Skull's Day of the Dead, also at SUNY Purchase this year. It took our students, and we went there on October 31st, which was, you know, Halloween, and that's an interesting day to take kids on a field trip. But it was great for that event, because we almost never expose our students to the Latino culture. And for our seventh graders, they got to experience something that many of them weren't aware about or didn't know the true background to. So we're trying not only to go places and do things, but make sure that we're doing it in a diverse way that addresses the multiple different groups and cultures that are present in our community. We're bringing Bright Star Touring Theater multiple times this year for Black History Month, similar to the way we did last year. It was an amazing show. And we have them for Women's History Month and Black History Month. We also already had them in for a performance ahead of that. Tanglewood Marionettes is going to come in and do a show for our sixth graders. We had about 75 students go to Global Boundaries for a STEM field trip with teachers. We have West Point this year. They are doing a free educational basketball game during the school day. So we are in the process of reserving buses. I thought Mr. Mackey today was going to... Roundabout has set for that one, but we're going to take one of our grade levels to the men's game. They're doing an 11 o'clock game, and they're going to do a health and wellness thing at halftime. They also have an educational activity during the game. But again, that's a college basketball game that some of our students may never experience. So it takes them and gives them an experience that maybe they haven't had yet, similar to the way Black Violin was like a concert. Some students have never gone to a concert, which for some of us, we think, what do you mean, they've never gone to a concert? But that's reality for a lot of kids in the district, and we're trying to open those opportunities up. In January, we have, and this is a new assembly, we have a hip-hop assembly coming in. And my hopes with this hip-hop assembly is that we're going to have an assembly that is on the students' level, and it's about empathy and talking about... The guy's name is Beacon, the performer. So Beacon is coming to Beacon to do a hip-hop assembly, so we couldn't resist. We had to book that. But I've not seen it. I've only seen his clip. His clip looks really good. He does some freestyling with students up on stage. I mean, this is how our students, this is what our students listen to, and my hopes is his message will get across to them in a different way that we haven't been able to reach them at before. Our two big trips. On the bottom, you see Philadelphia. We are about 90% set there. We have an itinerary. That is going to be a one-day trip for our seventh grade students. The district is going to support us on that trip, because that's another trip that we want every student to experience. So we don't want cost to prohibit students from attending that field trip. So our goal is for every seventh grade student that wants to go and has a permission slip, that they will be able to go. Our hope is, you know, that we're going to be able to figure out the cost so that money is not a barrier to that trip. So there's an expectation of full attendance on that day. The Washington DC trip, on the other hand, is, you know, a three-day, two-night overnight trip for our eighth graders. That's not something that we can take the cost on for, and it's also not something that cost is the only prohibiting factor. There's a lot of families that aren't comfortable with their child going, and we have to respect that. But I like to encourage any of them that are to come. As part of our equity work, I'm going to pass this, if you don't mind taking one and passing them. I'll explain it. You don't have to read it now. You can read it later if you want. We do scholarship for our Washington DC trip. Last year, any student that applied for the scholarship was helped in some way, shape, or form, from full scholarships to partial scholarships to half scholarships. We awarded over $4,000 to students last year to come on this trip with us. We have the forms available. Again, could I, could we provide scholarship to every student that are requested? No. I would have to stop doing my daytime job and be a full-time fundraiser for that to happen. But what I'd like to say is, we turned no student away last year who was interested in going due to a financial reason from the Washington DC trip. So we had a parent this year who sent me the top email that you'll see. I'm not going to read it out loud, but that's the email that I received one evening. I responded to that parent, and then you'll see her response. So this is a student that we are going to provide scholarship for and pay fully for them to go on this trip, because this student is an upstanding student in our school. Regardless of grades, regardless of any other thing, this student always does the right thing in terms of polite, respectful, doesn't have the easiest life, if you read through everything. And this parent wasn't asking us for a handout if you read it. But her email to us is something I forward to my entire staff at the end, because that's why we do what we do, and that's equity work right there, because we've made a huge difference for someone where this trip would be a hardship for others. And I owe a big thank you to my teaching staff, because they put a lot of money into our scholarship fund. And I owe a big thank you to our PTO, who also puts a ton of time and effort into our scholarship fund so that we can provide people who don't have the means to send their child an opportunity to send their child. It's kind of an odd transition, but projects... So I apologize about the transition there, all right? We have a new committee this year. We have a farm-to-school committee, and our cafeteria has started to push some of those healthier options. So on one of our professional development days, they fed our entire staff with some really, really amazing food. I mean, you taste it, and it's, you know, it's really neat to see what the kids could get that's a little healthier for them and not traditionally what they've had. We also had our cafeteria workers provide free samples on open house night, and that was a huge hit, because normally, parents would go in the cafeteria for 10 minutes and just sit around. I mean, this time, we were giving them food. I mean, it was like, it was like being at Sam's Club. You know, they walked through, they got free samples. We had people going late to their next class, but that's all right. They stayed there. Our PBIS committee has taken off this year. We have a mobile school store, which you see Abneet there smiling through. She, if you've read the most recent blog, was our star student at Roundabout Middle School, because she is exactly that, a star student. Great to be around, wonderful smile, and constantly active. We don't have to try to engage her in the school community. She's engaging us in the school community, which is really neat. So the school store goes in on Fridays. We've got sold out a couple times, so we restock now. We do door decorating as well. We do a spirit week, both for like a homecoming-type thing and a holiday. The kids love getting dressed up and being silly, and let's be honest, we want them to want to come to school, so school has to have fun activities that they look forward to, other than just heading to class. So we try to do things that engage them on their level. We do shout-outs. My two APs know, like, I think they know every kid's birthday in the school, because Mrs. Edelman announces birthdays every Monday for anyone who has a birthday that week, and Mrs. Biorde is delivering them cards. They blow me away with how into the students they are on that level, and it means a lot to the students, because they're being recognized at that time. So regardless of who the student is, they could be the most popular kid in the school or somebody that doesn't see a lot of people on a regular basis. They're getting that interaction and recognition on a level playing field. We are also with the RMS Student Council in conversations with Joe Pimentel again, who's the muralist that did the mural in our lobby with our eighth graders. We're looking at doing a unity, diversity mural in our cafeteria. If you've ever been in the Roundabout Cafeteria, where we do our assemblies, behind is a huge white wall, and we leave, like, lots of junk up there. So we are really looking to make that a showcase spot. You won't be able to see it from the road, like that one, but we're hopeful that he's going to come up with some concepts that we can tweak with the kids. And whether it happens this year or next year, we're going to do something there to tie in the diversity and the unity. He's done, he did a mural at Austin High School where he used the... Oh, if you ever go online and look at his work, he really does some amazing things. And when we do do it, any of you are welcome to come in and just sit and watch and work with the kids. It's almost like meditating. Like, you can just sit back, and you're completely relaxed, because from the toughest kid in the building to the best kid in the building, they're great for him. Like, he's got them painting, and they don't say a word. They just sit there, and they paint for them, and it's truly wonderful. And how are we stepping outside our comfort zone, other than when I turn my computer on every day and call Mike? I will tell you that having the equity team and equity work is going to put us outside of our comfort zone constantly. I'm just going to be as real with you as I can. I think attempting to do equity work is attempting to put yourselves in other people's shoes on a constant basis, which is not the easiest thing to do, and we're going to make mistakes as we do it. But the more we have the conversations to try to figure out what our students are facing and the different barriers that they have, the more opportunities we're going to figure out on how to provide them. We don't have all the answers when it comes to our committee. We sit, we talk, we bounce ideas off other people. Your input is always welcome, but that is not the easiest conversation to have, because I only know my perspective in life. I'm trying to make myself, or put myself in other people's shoes. And to do that, I'm trying to advocate for them in the best way possible, and so are the rest of the teachers and staff. And through this committee that we have now, it allows us more time to have those conversations, and those conversations are going to continually change, because we are a diverse school, which is why I love it. But being so diverse means we have different groups constantly, and we constantly have to be looking at those different groups, and how are we servicing them as a whole, and how are we making the school community better as a whole? So I will tell you that that definitely has to be outside of your comfort zone, because there's a lot that goes into it. We have a culture team that we created this year. We've partnered with the Elks Club and Beacon, and they are going to give out Students of Character awards. We're going to be doing that at our honor roll assemblies. We have our BERT team, which is a big transition now that we have all the different regulations coming, and we're on with the security firm. It's a lot of new things that we're learning, and we're trying to make sure that we're keeping our buildings as safe as possible. And then the last thing outside of our comfort zone is, we are attempting to do computer-based testing this year in ELA, which is exciting and scary at the same time, because we're not going to have a paper test sitting in front of us, so we need to make sure that everything's 100% ready to go, can handle it. I'll be honest with Mike at the helm, I'm very confident in our ability to get that off the ground, and Mrs. Edelman will have that all set for us as well. Steven was BERT again? The building emergency response team? All right, thanks. You're welcome. That's it. We don't have a closing slide. That was a closing slide. Do you want me to answer your question first? I was going to start the presentation with that, but it seemed weird. So at Roundabout, we do sometimes struggle with some of our clubs or activities, and part of that's because our sixth graders can't play school sports yet. So we started a Home and Careers Club last year, and that thing, like, I mean, when I tell you they knocked the door down to get into that club, we've expanded it this year to two clubs. So it was completely, like, the Home and Careers lady, she's coming in this class, like, I don't know what to do with all of them. Like, I'm not sure, you know, 75 kids want to make gingerbread houses. You know, the room only fits so many, and it's tough to manage. So last year, she was making, like, different groups. So this year, we've increased that club so that we can get almost twice as many kids into it. But what happens is, you hit a number of students where you're trying to do an activity with, and it becomes unmanageable for that person in a one-day setting. So this year, she does have, like, an A group and a B group, and she's meeting a couple times each month with each group to try to make the activities work. Our student council, again, because it's something that all the kids can get involved in, tends to get limited to, like, members, and then once in a while, they'll do a general membership meeting, and our club can tend to explode from time to time, because these are clubs where kids can now do activities and things that we didn't have in the past that are very engaging for them. So we do have some, not all. I mean, not every club fills, and we're like, oh, you can't participate. But there are ones where we make them sign up, and it does get tough, and it's limiting. But I only have one Home and Careers teacher, so I can only split her in so many ways. I hope that helps answer that question.
Any other questions? Are you going to? This is James. Can you just go to the mic? Because people are...
Yeah, sorry. We're talking indirectly.
Yeah. What are you going to have? This is very similar to the question I asked Miss Soto. I'm very interested in the shift to using restorative practices in our disciplinary mode. Is that something you're exploring at Roundabout?
Our school is scheduled to begin our training in March. I believe the PD day is in March. So the high school was the first school to work on that, and Roundabout is slated for that later this year to begin that training work and working on that.
Do you have any thoughts for that, or is that...
I am open to anything. I'm very interested to see how everything works together and what that looks like on a daily basis with the students. So I don't think there's any such thing as not being interested. Like, anything we can do to possibly help students improve is important. Thank you. No problem.
I heard in the past about the theater productions in the Roundabouts, you know, obviously in the shadow of the big players here in high school. And you may not have heard of that, but in terms of support and scheduling... Um, and then you may not have heard of that, um, but, uh, in terms of support, scheduling and trying to get them, I guess, to improve up to that, you know, close to that level. Have you heard of that, uh, comment or?
I mean, not necessarily in that way. I mean, we're at a, I would say a much younger age at our school. So, uh, I've attended the, the productions we've had, the junior musicals that we've had for the last several years I've been there and every year, I'm impressed with, uh, the quality and the students who are going out there on a limb to perform in front of people. Uh, you know, we might not be on Broadway yet, but I think it takes a lot for them to get up there and perform for their peers. Uh, and I think that the kids and I've had various people run it over the last several years have all done, uh, what I would consider a really nice job of the show.
And this weekend is?
Yes. This weekend is Fame Junior, Friday and Saturday at Rom Bell.
Um, also, uh, and, and good job with that. Um, also the, uh, you know, the middle school is, is kind of the place where, uh, all four elementary schools converge.
Yeah. Yes, they, yes, they do.
Yeah. Um, uh, do you, um, do you have any, um, do you see any, any room for improvement where you need our support to, to try to, uh, ease that convergence? You know, uh, you know, there's, every school has their own type of demographic, culture to some extent. And all of a sudden now they have to all, uh, make new friends and meet people they've never, you know, met before.
Yeah, you know, um, I'll be honest with you. I find that our sixth grade students tend to acclimate fairly well. I mean, after they get through like the procedural changes of opening lockers and changing classes and, uh, you know, we're handing them Chromebooks now, so that was another one. But they tend to, uh, you know, naturally kinda make friends. Uh, for them, there's a lot more freedom at the middle school than, than there necessarily was at some of the elementary schools. So I find a lot of them, after they find their way and get their bearings, tend to have a positive experience in sixth grade and get themselves going. I mean, they're at a rough age, uh, from six to eight. I, honestly, every age is a, a rough age for its own reasons, but you know, there's a lot going on, uh, in their minds, but I would say that it's a great way for them to grow up. I think we, in this school district, are more similar to reality than a lot of other districts are in terms of the real world and, and what it's like to be out there talking to all different people from all different, uh, races and backgrounds, you name it. I feel like we have it here and I believe that that molds our students to be better, ready for society when they get out of our school system. Thank you. But yeah, if you want, I mean, any field trips you wanna send me on or like I'll take speakers, field trips, those things. Any of those you wanna give me, I am ready for.
Any other questions?
I have one, just a quick one. You said computer-based testing. Will they be testing on their Chromebooks?
They would be testing on their Chromebooks. It will only be for ELA.
Okay.
Um, and there are sample things online that the teachers can access, so the kids will see how to use them. Uh, math, my goal is hopefully, uh, next year because math has an equation editor that they've gotta get familiar with before we go throwing them into that.
And is that for sixth, seventh and eighth?
Yes. Yep, we're gonna go sixth, seventh and eighth in ELA.
Great. Is that for all, um, including students with learning disabilities and?
We have, we have the option. So for, if a student has test read as their accommodation, we have paper copies of the test read, uh, that are gonna come in. But the online testing has test read components that once you teach the students how to use properly, many students prefer that over because what happens is they can control how many times a passage is reread, the speed of it. So I mean, think about being a student. If you're sitting with somebody, you keep asking them to read the same line, sometimes that could be uncomfortable in and of itself. Where if you're in control of it at the keyboard, uh, other than not being a voice you might be familiar with, you have complete control of what you're hearing, how often, at what speed. So a lot of schools I've talked to have begun to use that option and they find the kids, uh, really do like it. But that is something that we would need to practice with, uh, a lot before we were to implement.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, any motion to adjourn to the concession to review, to review the employment issue of a particular person?
So moved.
Second. Comments or questions? Or is expected to return in a half hour after adjourned? Thank you. We do have one correction to the agenda. It is item twelve point oh four. Item C six, we added a name. Oh, I'm sorry, L six. Alright, do we have any student or school presentations? Seeing none, we're gonna go to parent groups. Any parent groups? So hand up.
Hi, everyone. Couple things. I'm gonna speak for Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation and also for Sargent Elementary School. I've been doing my Sargent drag all year. My name's Lori Murnich, co-chair of Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation. I wanted to make a couple announcements, um, just about some stuff we have going on. Um, first of all, we received a really generous grant from the Newport Festivals Foundation. This is the organization that brings the Newport Folk Festival every year. Um, it was the easiest thirty-five hundred dollars we've ever made. It felt so good. Um, the guy called and he wanted to give some money to an arts organization that would bring a folk music program, um, to students that honored Pete Seeger. Of course, it's his hundredth birthday, uh, this year. So, um, you know, they wanted to kinda celebrate Pete and, and do something like that. They couldn't, uh, celebrate the, um, Calico Ball. They couldn't, uh, fund the Calico Ball. They really wanted to do something sort of extra. So we are going to be working now to bring something to the high school that, uh, is a folk music program. We're working with Susan Wright and, uh, hopefully some more faculty to bring in a, um, a folk program to talk about Pete and his legacy and of course his, uh, the history of activism in relation to folk music. So very excited about that. Uh, we're also gonna be bringing a folk music program to elementary, also, uh, to, uh, celebrate Pete Seeger's birthday. So we're gonna be hopefully scheduling that in coming months. Um, and another thing I wanted to announce, just really great news, this past weekend was the workshop event at the Jessica Wickham Studio. I hope some of you went. It's, uh, was an artist in the fair. Um, happens, this was the sixth year, is that right? The sixth year this year? Um, a really great sale of just local artists' work and each year for the past couple of years, they've, um, held a raffle with all proceeds benefiting Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation and we made nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is a record. This year is a really big deal. Thank you for organizing that. Um, that's a good evidence part of that. Um, that's good news for Pete. More to come there. Actually, one, one thing we were wondering about was the status of the Arts and Education Coordinator. Hope to get some more info in our meeting tomorrow, so we're gonna talk about that. But, um, hoping to get, hoping, hopefully some staff came forward and we're gonna get some people working, uh, on that. So Sergeant, um, my name's Lori Murnich. I'm the president of Sergeant PTO. Um, one thing we did last week at Sargent was we held a karate night. This was a fundraiser for our next beautification project, which is in the gymnasium. Very excited. We're gonna start putting some paint up in there, get rid of that beige. Um, and that's gonna be happening hopefully over the Christmas break if we can get approval. Um, another thing, I don't wanna outdo Principal Saltish, but we also are hiring Joe Pimentel to put in a mural in our downstairs hallway. Go Joe. Uh, Joe's rocking it all over this town. Um, all over the state, actually. His work really is amazing. You should check it out. Um, so as, as many of you know, Sargent Elementary School used to be a seminary. It's rather, um, it's, it's rather cold and beige in the downstairs hallway. So, um, we're embarking on what probably be a three-year project, but we'll do one section at a time. And then it'll complete the entire hallway from the cafeteria all the way down to the gym. So we're super excited about that. That's gonna, we have him on the schedule for March. And the kids are all gonna be involved. They're gonna submit drawings. We'll probably do it with the fourth and fifth graders. Um, so it'll be a bit of a legacy project for them too. So that's super exciting. And then the last thing I wanna say is to save the date, folks, for the next trivia event. I know all of you are gonna come and show off your trivia skills. This is Sergeant Stars Trivia, January seventeenth. Please save the date at the Hudson Valley Brewery. Maybe we can get a board and a team to come out and challenge the other schools. Try to get every school represented here. If you wanna compete with your own school, I understand that too. If you wanna be with the winners, you can compete with Sergeant's team. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, on the agenda tonight, if you look at I, you'll see that there's an appointment of the Arts and Education Coordinator.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my gosh. I have the agenda for music. Thank you.
Any other parent groups? Seeing none, we're gonna go open to the public. We have one person sign up. Jean-Marc?
Thank you.
Just so you know, Jean, I will give a twenty minute, um, when time's gonna be, I'll give you twenty seconds.
I think I got it. It was a minute and a half, three minutes?
Well, I've just. Yeah, I haven't spoken public before, so I just felt like another four minutes, so I'll give you twenty seconds when, uh.
Good. Um, hi, uh, my name is Jean-Marc. I live at twenty-two Coffee Avenue, uh, Beacon. My daughter goes to, uh, Rom Bell Middle School. Um, before I say anything, um, about my, uh, letter, I, I just wanna say that, um, I, uh, know some of, uh, you, uh, personally, some not yet, but, um, I think I, um, share, uh, my appreciation for, uh, what you do on the board. I know it's a tremendous amount of work and, um, I know the board has, uh, not always looked the way it looks, uh, now and that everyone's interested in, um, doing and making, uh, things better and, and they can always be better, which is what I think, uh, the letter is about. Okay, um, the letter that I, uh, e- emailed to you, hopefully, uh, you had a chance to read, is the one I'm gonna read and, um, those of, uh, uh, you who, uh, are attending the, the meeting today will also get it, uh, get to hear it. So my, my intention was to make this, uh, make this part of the, the public record. So what I would like to bring to the attention, um, to the board is, uh, events that are occurring at an alarming, uh, increasingly alarming rate at, um, at my daughter's, uh, school, at Rom Bell Middle School. Uh, my child came home one day and, uh, has, uh, has come, uh, on repeated occasions, um, over the course of several weeks, uh, with reports of having heard other students say, and I'm quoting, "Hail Hitler, kill the Jews, uh, let's finish what Hitler started" and other Nazi slogans and salutes, uh, in the classroom and around lunch tables. Now, whether or not the students are aware of how toxic these anti-Semitic statements are, uh, my child, uh, and probably several other children who are Jewish, uh, certainly is, are, uh, the students who make these comments, um, and I think this is what, uh, should be pointed out, uh, know enough to not say them, uh, directly, uh, to, um, my daughter, uh, but clearly, uh, within earshot. Um, they say it quietly enough so that the teachers don't, uh, hear them and, um, several of their, um, attempts at salutes, I'm, I'm not sure, are done, um, uh, where they seem to know the, the, the cameras are, are not. Uh, this leaves no quote "proof," uh, uh, by which they can be stalked or, or caught. And, uh, when my child has, uh, confronted some of these students, uh, this is exactly what was said to her, um, which I believe makes this, uh, behavior even more insidious. Uh, my wife met, um, with, uh, Mr. Saltish, um, individually and, uh, I, uh, attended the, uh, PTO meeting where we had a chance to speak, uh, as well. Um, and so after hearing from Mr. Saltish how, uh, similar incidents, uh, been dealt with, um, in the past and, uh, I wanna make it clear, what I'm saying is, has no reflection on the, the way in which I, I, I believe Mr. Saltish is, 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 uh, is rightly, um, dealing, um, with this issue. Um, but I think, uh, what I believe is that the current course of action that's mandated by the DASSA, the Decency for All Students Act, um, which I, uh, understand is what's, uh, implemented, um, in the school district, uh, as a whole, um, are wholly inadequate to deal with this, um, with this situation. I cannot imagine putting my daughter in a position where she will have to single out individuals for harassment that they can ea- they can easily deny. Um, and, uh, this, this, uh, potentially, I think, creates a situation where she can easily be accused of being a false accuser. And, um, that's just gonna make a, a, a very stressful situation already worse. I think punitive action against students who spread such hate speech is not a solution. So I'm presenting this letter because I have no way of gauging how horrific, these horrific things, whether they were said in earnest or, uh, whether they were knowingly directed at my child. Um, I have no way of evaluating, uh, the responsibility of individual teachers in whose classrooms this hate speech was uttered, since they're not witnesses to it. But what I do know is that my child, and I don't think any other child, should have to suffer the threat, indirect or not, the references to historical genocide of the Jews made to her physical and mental safety.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
That's four minutes.
That's four minutes. Okay. So, um, basically, I'm just urging the, uh, board in, uh, anyway, to examine the way in which, uh, changes can be made on a systemic level to prevent this, uh, kind of toxic level. I have some links, um, in the, the email that hopefully, uh, work when you click on them. Um, uh, but I think there's a tremendous amount of resources out there to, um, bring in very, very qualified, very knowledgeable people into the classroom who can, who can, um, help, uh, not, uh, spread, uh.
Alright. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address more?
Good evening. My name is Johannes Espiralta. Uh, I live here, Beacon. My daughter's a student on a Beacon High School. Um, I had the opportunity to speak to, uh, I'm sorry? Julissa. Uh, I wanted to address certain concerns that I do have about, uh, how certain schedules are being run with, for the, for the student at other Beacon High School. My daughter has an IP and it has been a struggle. You know, accommodating her classes, you know, that her IP is being honored. All first wrote up an IP meeting such as that she can go to BOCs and she, uh, the BOCs will honor the IP and then I had to fight everybody. Once my daughter stole into the whole program, um, you know, not necessarily pulling my hair, but fighting everybody, you know, the right way though. Enforcing that she has what she needs because it was missed. Um, I called it, um, felt like I have a better word, I'm sorry. False advertisement type of deal. That's what I, exactly how I called it. They said that they were gonna honor IP, but then because BOCs, CTI and Beacon High School are two different school districts, then I'm stuck in the middle with my child dealing with everything and not that much of a support. Uh, things as like, I had to fly for my daughter. When I take my daughter to outside counseling, I had to deal with the fact that I hear many other students as well as the counselors saying that the kids are not being scheduled at lunch. Yet they are given a pass, but then I had to present it just like this. If a teacher is allowed to have a lunch by law, why is it that the student can have this same amount of decent time to have a lunch? Then they go to BOCs, they don't even own a cafeteria, nevertheless abandon the machine. Most of the parents that send the kids over here, majority of them like myself, under poverty level or maybe with social security check and most of them, they can't even afford to send lunch for the children. And then they have to send them over there and they are being rushed. I had to speak to the, uh, transportation. I spoke then over here as well. The, my child, uh, is still currently missing, even though she has an IP. She had to miss forcefully fifteen minutes and she had to leave the classroom before time because I both had to be here, which is something that is new. Nobody can help because everybody had their hands tied. Everywhere I go and I turn, I got no help. It is the most frustrating, uh, situation and I know not just for me, but for the ones that had to run it, the ones that had to be under. It's like the scheduling is not working really for the kids or for the children or the parent. I don't know who, I had to, I had to address this matter. I mean, I ran out of options other than I really make a big effort just to be here because I was told, why don't you come here? Why don't you bring this over here? But for the most part, I lived in doctor's appointment, went to the point that I had to resign my job. It is not easy, but I think that it is not impossible. For the most part, that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Did you want to address any? She's from, especially, uh, I think. It's not that she didn't, especially, uh. Thank you. Well, someone will follow up with you with who to, okay, I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no other comments, but we're going to move to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you for public comment tonight. Public comments like this help us, help us certainly grow as a district. And so I just had a couple of thoughts that I want to share, I read your letter yesterday, and spent a little bit of time just putting some thoughts together from the district perspective. First of all, obviously, I strongly agree that hate in the form of speech or hateful acts have no place in our schools and our community. When they do happen, they need to be addressed. I appreciate the aspect of your letter that calls for sort of a broader look, instead of just investigating individual acts, to look at a way to change both the way we're teaching and the culture of our buildings. And so these are just some of my thoughts about where we're headed with that. During my first year, which was last year here in Beacon, both speaking with numerous stakeholders and also my own personal observations in the school, I think probably my biggest takeaway was that our highest priority was creating a more inclusive and welcoming environment for all of our students and their families. That work has to go beyond me, so one of our first steps with that was doing a lot of professional development for our administrators this summer. Our administrative team did three days of inclusivity and diversity training this summer, and then an additional day where we identified teacher leaders from each building to join them. Our principals, directors, or administrators with these teacher leaders formed equity teams. If you've heard some of these school principal reports over the last few board meetings, a lot of the, or all the principals have referenced this work. The primary goal of these teams is twofold, one is to create, like I said, a more welcoming environment, an inclusive environment for our students and families, but also to look at barriers that keep kids from accessing all that we have to offer in our district. I think it really, another important step, and I usually don't look at a screen, but I wanted to quote a couple of things. Another important thing that happened this year was when the board was setting their goals. One of the goals that they created was called creating a culture of care, or a culture of care goal. And just hats to James for, we have this kind of underneath a goal, and he pulled this out to create its own goal. That goal reads, "BCSD will foster a culture of care dedicated to maintaining a safe and supportive emotional environment that ensures the wellness of all members of our community." It's certainly a very aspirational goal, and, you know, the public comments tonight show that we have a long way to go in achieving that. Another thing that's happening right now, and this is in draft form, but our strategic planning process is happening. And I think one of the really interesting things that came out of that survey slash thought exchange that we put out to the community was one of the highest rated ideas. The thing, the thought exchange was asking, what do we want, what skills and attributes do we want to see our graduates possess? One of the highest, or the highest rated things that we kept seeing over and over was the idea of empathy and emotional intelligence. So this is still in draft form, and we'll do much more unveiling of this after winter break, but the Strategic Plan Committee took all this data and created, these are, I'm just pulling a couple attributes that we want to see our graduates. One is empathy as an attribute, kindness, care, compassion for others, respect for persons and property, understanding the circumstances and opinions of others, another is self-regulation, and another is citizenship community, with something underneath that saying, understanding that all members are part of a larger whole. And also contributing to the overall success of the community as a whole. So we heard about this earlier tonight, but to move this work further along this year, our secondary teachers are receiving training in restorative practices, which I think, quite honestly, is something that folks in the district haven't talked about at all. And that at the elementary level, and this will be happening at March, it won't be all of our elementary teachers, but a core group will be receiving training in something called responsive classroom, which one could argue is sort of the elementary version of restorative practices. But it's, both of them are models where, where teachers, I think, learn to listen better and to communicate better with their students, and also students communicating and listening to each other. Some of the curriculum work that we want to start working on, or we will start working on next month, and then into the March eighth day, is we are gonna be connecting with the Facing History organization to help our teachers with a couple different things, especially social studies and English teachers. It will start with a webinar that they're offering in January, which is, I'm not gonna do it justice, but it's about teaching the Holocaust. And then also, they offer some training for teachers in how slavery is taught and reconstruction. So I think part of it is going to be tapping into the PD that they already have, kind of pre-scheduled, but also connecting with someone in the organization to possibly come on March eighth, which is an identified professional development day to further that work. One of the things that we saw last year at the middle school was that some comments were made after the World War II unit was taught, comments by students, I should say. And so we want to prepare our teachers better for, again, not to call them out for not doing a good job, but I think this is an area where we could do better and probably teach more thoughtful, because it's probably one of the most difficult topics to teach. Just other things that we're looking into, a parent attended a, the board has a diversity committee, and a parent attended a couple of meetings ago, and called upon the district to start providing anti-bias training for our staff. And so, and so that's something that we're spending some time looking into. When I say we're looking into it, I don't mean that as we're just sort of doing it and then we're not gonna follow up. When we look into something, we really try to find some of the best people to do it. We do, essentially, we do reference checks on organizations or individuals that work with districts, because we don't want to waste any time with our staff with this, and we want people who are really good. So, so another thing we'll look into, like I said, is this anti-bias training. In talking with Principal Soltesh today, I know he's gonna be working on just some plans that are specific to Rombaugh, and he'll be sharing that with the Rombaugh School community in the coming weeks. So, so these are all, in this journey to be a more inclusive and welcoming district, more affirming, and also one that really takes a hard look at equity, these, it's a very long journey that we're taking some initial steps. I'm sorry that your daughter's having that experience, or any student. And, and we certainly, I think, are taking some steps, but we have a long way to go with that work. The work is uncomfortable, but whenever it's kind of labeled to me as uncomfortable, or whenever people express maybe some of their discomfort, I know, I know that we're heading in the right direction because, because it's the work that needs to happen in this district. It was mentioned by both of our principals earlier today, when they, when Miss Soto and Mr. Soltesh gave their reports on their schools in terms of their goals, really celebrating the diversity in our district. And so, along with that celebration, we need to really, I think we also, and it came out in the strategic planning work, we really need to do a much better job with this social emotional education part. And so, you know, I talked about some of the classroom strategies, restorative practice, responsive classroom, some of the curriculum work that we'll be working with Facing History, some of the anti-bias training with our staff. But then there's also just, in general, helping our young people learn to be more empathetic. And that is probably, was, you know, if you went into the thought exchange thing, anything that mentioned empathy was probably got like the most stars and the highest rating. And, and I think probably we all could agree in that being something that the district needs to focus more on. And so with that in mind, we're also looking at some, at some curriculums and some strategies that other districts are using with success in terms of being more direct in that teaching. So, you know, when this work is done well, it does take time, there's some things we can address certainly in a much quicker way, and I'll lean on Mr. Soltesh to do some of that at the school. We'll work with him to support some of this curriculum work, but there's, there are lots of little steps that we're taking as a district, but certainly many more miles to go. I want to thank you for coming in public and speaking that, and for you as well to share your concerns with us in public. Like I said at the beginning of my comment, it helps us grow, helps me grow as an individual, it helps us grow as a district. Just a couple little add-ons to my superintendent report, just a reminder that tomorrow is the BOCs capital budget vote. You can vote, if you're a Dutchess County resident, you can vote anywhere, not anywhere, but any of the polling places in the county, you don't have to vote just in Beacon. But if you're voting in Beacon, the voting location is at the district office at Ten Education Drive in the conference room, and, and at the time of the voting is twelve noon to eight PM. And then just lastly, I was able to attend the chorus line Saturday night, and Beacon Players did a great job with that performance, and just wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you.
Thank you, I have two questions for Matt, if I can, or even wait until comments. One, wait until your comments. Noah, any? Go for it.
Alrighty, so there was a few surveys recently, not a big one that we talked about, but a few small ones. This first one that Annie's gonna talk about a little bit is with students that have been thankful for here at VHS, and then we have another one about the after-school program and kind of breaking that down a little bit.
Yes, hello. Well, this was kind of our, like, Thanksgiving-ish present for the teachers, but that's kind of overdue, so we're gonna present it anyways, though. But, yeah, we kind of just asked the students multiple things, and these are just some of their answers in touch notes. Um, and here's the list of all the teachers. It wasn't a survey directed at all the students, so some of these results are kind of focused, but, like, we love Miss Feath a lot. But, yeah, I think it's more just kind of, like, and then here is just a bunch of comments for a bunch of students paying attention to teachers. I think it's more just appreciations for all the teachers in general, regardless of their names, we're all on the list, they're not. But, yes, we received a lot of feedback, so I think what really matters is that the students were actually vocal in what they were thankful for and stuff, and this is, so it shows to say that teachers and everyone working in high schools have been very helpful in assisting the students.
Alright, so now we have some numbers to share about the after-school tutoring. So this is just pretty much showing why the students are staying after school, so fifty percent of them are with a tutor that they find helpful, which is great because they, some students, mostly the basketball teams have big gaps between practices, so they're getting their work done, which is good. You know, some students do come just to hang out, which is also good, they're not standing in the hallway where it's going to get crowded, or outside, so it is good, we do have a lot of students that come. Not all of the students were surveyed, but it does give a good representation of what the students are doing after school. You can see how much student athletes actually take advantage of this. If you're not a student athlete, it's mostly be drama kids that are hanging out, but the student athletes really are benefiting from this program. And Mondays are actually the busiest day. Kids don't want to leave, there's no late bus, so they just hang out and use that tutoring, which has become really helpful. So this was our last two surveys, I just sent Dr. Markel and Miss Soto the questions to our next survey that we have going out soon, and that's gonna be about the classes and what students want to see in the future of VHS, so that one will be exciting. Not as many graphs, I'd love to go through it more, but that one will be at the next meeting.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig?
Okay, I'll record on the two committees, and my personal observation, having had a tremendous time Friday night seeing Chorus Line, I have to remark that this is sort of a high watermark for the Beacon Players in a couple of ways. One of them is some of the, much more adult content of some of the thematic material is contained in the original script of that production, and I haven't heard any complaints so far. I hope I don't, because I think they handled it very well. The second thing is, guys can actually dance. This comes as a great surprise to many people, but some people thought this never could be done, but there actually were eight dancing high school students as part of that cast. This is not something that's really easy. If you go to any of the local dance schools, you'll find they are about ninety-six percent female enrollment. I wish it were closer to fifty-fifty. It's really remarkable what happened on the stage when you have some students who, some of them have had extensive dance training, and were quite remarkable, including the soloists, but others had hardly any, some had none, and nevertheless came together. This is really a testament to the people that are working with these students, as well as the students themselves. We've never seen anything at this level, we've seen some dance before, but I can tell you that from going back a number of years that I've been watching these productions, this is really a high watermark, and very encouraging. So hats off to everybody in the Beacon Players. Mike Rukowski, the chairman of the Facilities and Operations Committee, cannot be with us tonight, so he asked me to do a little summary. Number one, we continue to work on the current capital project, where there's some review going on. I'm not sure what's happened since the last meeting, but there are some wheels in need to turn in Albany, at various points in this process, and we're looking at trying to find ways to make the budget fit, and/or make the project fit the budget before we actually get out to a bid. So perhaps Anthony may have some additional updates on that or that.
It's all been approved.
That's good news. Great. So we're, we're pretty well on track then. So.
Craig, not pretty well, we are on track.
On track. Well, I say pretty well because the real meat is when you go out to bid and you see what the contractors want to offer, and they're busy. That's, that's the dark side, is when they're busy, you don't get the best bids, but we'll see what happens. I think that a well-run district is an attractive one to work for. I think we have a pretty good reputation in that regard. We're looking for the engineering report on the HBA system in this building. We've been asking some experts to come up with some opinions and findings, so look forward to learning more about that. I'm informed by Mr. Corderoni that we're targeting the January meeting for our financial consultants to come in and give us a prospect on what kind of size of a next capital project we might be able to do, what kind of timeframe that might occur in. We've been talking about it as being a couple of years after this one, so we'll get some more details on that when we put the numbers together. I believe our next meeting is still scheduled, or been rescheduled for December eighteenth. That would be at seven o'clock.
It's nineteen. I, I put it wrong in the email to you at first, and then I corrected it, so it's Wednesday at nineteen.
At nineteen? Okay, good. They're doing this in real time here, okay. And if I'm not mistaken, we're still on for the employment relations advocacy legislative for this Wednesday at eight fifteen. And in that committee, we do, we do know now who the legislators are that represent us locally. Sue Serino, the Republican incumbent, won by half a percent, narrowly edging Mrs. Smythe, who is a Democratic contender. So we'll see if we can reach out to her at some point. I think we'll probably talk about that Wednesday, what our approach might be to establish some direct contacts with our local reps. The other one is Jonathan Jacobson, who was successful in succeeding Francis Gortados in the Assembly District that includes Beacon. He's a Democrat from the Newburgh area. And then the other thing we've been working on is looking at the website, taking a deeper dive. At our last meeting, Mr. Keely came in, our tech director, and gave us some background on how the website works, where we get the framework from, and what the options might be. So we're a busy group there, and I'll tell you more on next meeting.
All right, and just to add to what Craig's report is for the FNO, we're also planning on having our architect in, come and present the project as well, and the timeline, so the board will understand the, the work and how it would be done to not affect the student learning and so forth. So the architect's going to be coming to talk about the safety and how it's not going to impact education and stuff.
Thank you, Craig. Flor?
Yeah, so we had our wellness committee meeting for December recently, we had a good turnout. We had represented some school staff, we had parents, superintendent was there, and community organizations that are working with schools, so it was great to see everyone there. There were a lot of plans and activities that we discussed, including the college fair and possibly combining that with the health fair in April. And there, there were just a lot of great ideas that were being thrown around about what to include there. We also formed a subcommittee for Family Wellness Night, and we're looking at school space availability and dates. And then we just discussed some really interesting things happening in the schools. For instance, this was mentioned earlier, but the farm-to-school programming at Rombout and how they're doing center-of-the-plate vegetable-based tastings, and the students are really responding to that. The Food Services Department is also waiting on a USDA grant. We will know about that one in May. There's another grant from New York State that I think we'll know about this month. And there's a lot of great coordination going on between Common Ground Farm and Hudson Nellie Seed and the schools, and it's really nice to see. On the other side, we're thinking about ways to assess the policy, the new policy that was passed last year, and how we can follow those guidelines as a district and how we're doing so far. And as always, I urge parents and others to attend. Our next meeting is Wednesday, January third at four, and there is childcare provided, so I hope to see some new faces. That's it.
When did you say next date was?
January third at four. Am I right, Celia?
Yeah.
That's right?
Yeah. Thank you. James?
Yeah. Well, I first wanted to speak to, thank our public speaker, Jan Zes. Thank you so much for coming down and sharing. I know that oftentimes when the parents bring themselves to these late-night meetings, it's driven out of maybe some frustration, maybe some exhaustion, some idea of how can we have this problem solved? But when you do that, you also help bring attention not just for yourself, but other students who may be having similar kind of struggles. I hope you get the help you need and you're in good hands, but thank you so much for sharing that, and you've been heard for sure by us. Thank you. Second, I wanted to thank Jean-Marc for coming out and making his comment in letter. I think this is something that, this is an issue that, it's on our minds, not just in our schools, but in the world, in our city, this is something we're grappling with, in our nation, this is something we're grappling with. Hate, and even more specifically antisemitism is something that we know is on the rise. It should be no surprise that our young people are mimicking it, they don't want to belittle it, parroting, absorbing, trying it out. I very much appreciate Jean-Marc's approach, that this should be something that we take on as how do we take steps for, to make cultural shifts within our institutions, right? At the same time, I move the opinion that we have to find ways to see this as a safety issue, right? I mean, it's a, we have to honor our free speech, our students' free speech, but at the same time, we need to make sure that some kinds of speech infringe on the rights of others. And so it's something that I think we, we need to take on very seriously, and I really appreciate it, it's something that we can bring to the forefront of our discussions. I know in my short time on this board, I've been so impressed that these are the kind of issues that we are already talking about, we are making some very great steps within our culture, our school culture, but there's still more work to be done, and I think the more parents and families we can bring it together, the stronger that gets, so it's fantastic. And not just you, and other parents who came out as well tonight. Committee reports. We had a policy committee meeting a few weeks ago. We're still, we're going through the process of bringing, updating our policies, several of which are brought to a first read, including all the ones we have on our agenda tonight, Student Activities Fund, Plans, Construction Cost, etc. We don't have a set date for the next meeting, the kind of the one-month mark would put us right into holidays. We can kind of discuss a period at later date. We won't let schedule that down, right? Do you want to wait till afternoon or?
Wherever you want.
Just as possible. The next, I mean, if we go one week, four weeks would have been the twenty-sixth, we're closed, that's no good. The next week after that is literally the first day schools are open again, because like, maybe not the, the right time, so then we'd be going a week later to the ninth.
Why don't you send it out to the people?
Yeah.
Of the committee.
All right.
Sounds good. Listen?
I just wanted to echo James's sentiments regarding Jean-Marc's letter, and I think that education on this topic can start at home. So, speaking for myself as the parent of two middle schoolers, I plan to have my own version of sensitivity training with my kids, and I think encourage other parents to do the same. You know, I know what I see from my middle schoolers is they're learning a lot about the world through social media, and from overhearing their parents talk about politics and what they hear adults talking about and what they hear adults angry about. And I think that a lot of times, they, obviously, they're not getting the full picture, they don't have a full understanding of those issues, and they take the bits and pieces, and they miss, they misuse terms, they misuse words. So I plan to talk to my kids about just knowing, knowing bad things when you hear them, and recognizing when something is inappropriate, or when something is not something to laugh about, or when something is not something to just ignore or pretend they didn't hear. So that's my comment for tonight.
All right, thank you. Anthony?
Good evening.
We're on a prompt with them tonight.
What? What are you? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we're on a visual with you, but I'll get to that in a minute. So.
You forgot about it, didn't you?
No, I have my laser pointer here. So first of all, I want to also echo James's comments about the two parents that commented. You know, it's, it's, I think, you know, the reason why I'm here is, is so that we are making an environment here in our own district that is, helps every student succeed, and I don't, and that also means a safe environment, it also means a comfortable environment, that also means an environment where each student is given the, not just, not just the atmosphere and the culture, but also tools to succeed, so. And I could have some questions, actually, follow up to those two parent comments, is one, are, are we, are we looking into the facing history in ourselves organization? Yes. Okay. And then the second comment, a second question I had was in terms of IEPs, are we giving student, are we giving parents information on Lana Lovely as a facilitator in the Learning Differences, which is a parents' support group in, in the district? Also Denise Green, who's the Westchester Independent Living Center and Panham Independent Living Center advocate, and Karen Lynch, the Teconic Resources, also another advocate. Are we giving those contacts to the parents as resources?
I know we give the first contact, I'm not certain about the others.
The, the parent advocate group, they share their information through different avenues. The PPS Department doesn't have those, or gives them out to a parent personally, they ask for them via the state website where there are parent resources. The Learning Differences Committee also shares that information at their meeting, I was at their meeting last week where we discussed, to all of the new parents that were there, sort of what the resources are and the role of the committee in terms of the support to them. So they do get a lot of information about district resources and resources outside of the district in the mid-term.
But if, but if a parent can't make those meetings, I mean, is there another way to give them that information, like a sheet or something of contacts?
The Learning Differences Committee has a distribution list that they share information with. I'm not sure how that they share, the PPS Department does not have consent to email every parent on the list regarding the, the happenings of the Learning Differences Committee, unless they grant us permission to do that. And the Learning Differences Committee doesn't have access to our parent on the list as well to share, so we share information on behalf of the committee whenever possible, either at CSC meetings, at parent night, at parent teacher conference, or court day.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'm not saying to you, send it out to all the parents that are on their list, or they submit stuff on your list, but what I'm asking is if a parent comes to your office, do you have a list of, of resources they can also get outside of the district at our home?
We direct it to the state website.
Okay.
For the resources, because they're, we get asked questions regarding legal advice or adv, advocates, or professional resources, like psychiatrists or all that sort, do you simply send them to the state website where there's a list of all that information?
Okay. All right, I mean, and, and that's, that may be fine, I've never, state websites sometimes I'm not the best.
That's okay, we're working on it, PPS Department, and updating our parent resource page, it's a work in progress right now, but we're hoping to, you would put information that's relevant to the community, and to the things that we frequently get asked about.
Good, oh, thank you, that's kind of what I was looking for. So I, I attended the Sustainability Committee for the district, Kristen was there as well. I want to steal a thunder, I'm sorry. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how, what comes out of the committee. Also, this morning, I, the City Beacon in town of Fishville had a resilience planning workshop, and I stole the visual from them this morning, well, with permission, and, you know, in that visual, you'll see that they are current flood risks, and that's in the purple, and then there's a future flood, flood risks, that's in orange, and this is from the Nature Conservancy, Andy Peck, he facilitated the, the workshop. And the workshop goes through quite a bit, quite a bit of hazard risks that could be sustained on assets. We looked at storm surge, elevated sea level rise, and inland flooding and drought. So the reason why I brought this in actually is because, you know, I believe some of this kind of intersects with the FNO and the upcoming new, new capital plans that we have to come up with, you know, are, are assets secure or to climate change? So the future flood risk, obviously, is a, is just a prediction based on information that is available so far from the USGS, FEMA, it's been, it's put together by the Nature Conservancy. You know, we do have, like, for example, the bus garage in the orange, so that's kind of one of the assets that I'm concerned about. The National Conservancy, Nature Conservancy did offer to come to other organizations to run a similar workshop on resiliency planning, but they would, they would prefer to agree with a group of organizations as opposed to just a school district. So maybe with, with the Chamber, with the Beacon Chamber or something, you know, to add more people in the community, and they're more willing to facilitate another resiliency planning workshop. And if you want more information, you can go to communityresiliencebuilding.com. And that's, oh, and, sorry, and for the Diversity Committee, I think the consensus is December, December nineteenth, so it looks like it will be after the FNO committee.
He was planning on running late. Just so far, I don't know if you saw that, because he, they're having someone, the financial advisors come, or?
They're coming in January.
Oh, January, okay.
But there's some things that the construction manager and architect have to resolve.
So you want to do eight-thirty, just to give that?
Yeah.
Flex of the fifteen minutes to kind of save?
I'll do eight-thirty.
Okay.
Okay. If it's okay with Flor and James.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, yeah. Hold my report.
Kristen?
Thanks. I just wanted to say thanks for the presentations tonight from the principals. It's really exciting to see everything that's going on, and great to get an update of what's happening in the buildings. And also, thanks to people who came out and provided public comment. You know, we're addressing these issues directly related to equity and social and emotional learning with new emphasis for the first time, and probably in one of the most challenging broader contexts of the, the broader culture that I've seen in my adult lifetime. So I think that we're kind of, we have a sort of really big uphill climb, and what we do know, and as Dr. Landel said in his report, is that we're committed to this work, and it's being woven into everything that we do, things that might not be very visible and, but we'll be creating a scaffolding around which we will build a, a culture, or hopefully this is something that students will be able to recognize and work out with each other. When one student says something deeply bothers them and upsets them, other students will know how to respond, because there's lots of adults that don't even know how to respond to that. It's surprising to me, and it's probably naive, but I grew, I grew up, I'm old enough to have grown up with friends who had grandparents who had been in camps, and there were certain things you never said, and you would never say. And so I think that the fear was always that people would forget. And so I think that the fear was always that people would forget, and I think that that didn't seem possible, but I think it's probably come to pass if you're not vigilant about reminding people, and especially within an educational context of what can happen when good people look away. So I think that we are trying to address this in so many different ways and so many different fronts in a very diverse school, whether it's related to ethnic background, learning abilities, economic status. So it's, it's never easy when it's just your, when it's affecting your child directly, but it is something that we are hoping to improve for all kids. The Sustainability Committee meets tomorrow at six. We'll be working on setting short-term...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Oh, my God. Only Monday. It's a long week. Oh, sorry, Wednesday at six. And we're working on setting short-term and long-term goals. There's some opportunities for us to partner with Wellness, so I'll bring that to your attention. Karen Pangano comes to the meeting, so there's some designations that we're looking to pursue and that directly relates to nutritional goals, and so maybe that's some things we can, we can add into the policy.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah. And congrats to the Beacon players, and thank you again to all the principals who presented today.
All right. I also wanted to thank principals for presenting, not just for tonight, but for workshops. I think it's great to see how each school is individual, but yet it's underneath the umbrella of the district. It's really looking great, and hearing about student achievement and what's going on in the schools, so good job. Every board member has a handout that is from the annual business meeting from NISBA. It has all the resolutions. You'll see my chicken scratch in there about what was passed, if there was a vote and so forth. If you have any questions, I think the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee is going to be looking at this and kind of looking at working on a resolution for next year's meeting, for a plan for if there's an emergency on a voting day and so forth. So I just wanted you to have that for your FYI, if you want to look up what resolutions passed and so forth at this year's meeting. This is our last meeting before the holidays, so I wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays to the staff at the Beacon State School District, to the parents and the students. Enjoy the holidays, enjoy the time with the family. Take a break from school, work, and just relax and enjoy your whole family. So, so last meeting before the new year. One, Craig?
It's Saturday.
It's Saturday?
It's only Monday.
I know. We're at the time, Consent Agenda. These are the Consent Agenda, which provides supportive education, make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion, cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything that any board member would like to pull from the Consent Agenda?
Twelve point oh eight.
Do we, yeah, twelve point oh two? Here I know the items. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, twelve point oh one through twelve point one four minus twelve point oh two and twelve point oh eight.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, seven zero. Twelve point oh two?
Twelve point oh two is the minutes from the November 19th meeting. I have three requests to add for additions to the minutes. Two of them are related for, open to the public, that was item three on that agenda, on those, in those minutes, the, we had suspended the public policy thing on that, but I thought it was important to actually add the names of the county legislator and the Dutchess County Government official that spoke to us. The county legislator was Fritz Zerneki from District 16, and Dutchess County Government official was Robert H. Balkin, PDE Commissioner of the Department of Public Works. I also wanted to make an addition to...
Hold on one second before, okay, go ahead. No, go ahead, sorry.
Number six in the new business in the minutes. There's a quote there under my name there, it says, "The board is not making a decision on the 21 acres of land." What I said was, the board, the word vacant is missing, so what I said was, "The board is not making a decision on 21 vacant acres of land." Those were my three requests to add to the minutes.
So you want to make a motion, add those items to the minutes?
Okay. Make a motion to add those three items to the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there comments or questions about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carried, seven zero. I need a motion to approve twelve point oh two as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Kristen? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, seven zero. So the minutes will refocus. I need a motion for twelve point oh eight.
So moved.
Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Flora? Comments or questions?
Yep. In looking this over, I was fascinated. I've seen these reports before about the unpaid taxes, and this is always a concern. I know that Mrs. Cordaroni has a long background in looking at this kind of data, and I was wondering if you might be able to advise us, does this number of unpaid taxes look like it's up, down, or different from the usual, or is it about the same?
It's about the same. It represents 96% of the total levy. In fact, there is some data that will be going out as an official statement, so we're pretty, we collect about 95 to 96%. We will start collecting some more in January, once the taxes are rolled over to the county and to the city, then people can pay that way. And then remember, after two years, the City of Beacon makes us whole, and after three years, the Dutchess County makes us whole. So we're in good shape. We've been in the same situation.
Very good. Thank you. The other observation I would make is that on that list of unpaid taxes, there are quite a few developers who own property, which is in various states of development, either finished or proposed or in the works. And these may not be the same developers who tell us how much taxes they're going to pay if they get approval for their projects, but I can't help but notice that sometimes those promises don't come true.
Or they will, or they're just delayed.
Or they may just be delayed, and some people play the game of, I think I'll invest the money in the meantime, just, you know, only one year behind, so I don't lose it.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, seven zero. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. Kristen, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, seven zero.